And if we need to, we'll just upload the YouTube video later, but we'll try to make it live here on Facebook.
And we are recording.
Very good. And I have six o'clock. All right, everybody ready to get started? All right, good evening, everyone. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. And just a reminder, if you're coming forward and speaking, please provide your name and address, speak directly into the microphone, if you would. So, that being said, and the agenda being posted, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
So I have a motion from Trustee Andrews to approve the evening's agenda, and I have a second from Trustee Roma's. Is there any further discussion or questions with regard to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Let's stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
All right. Public appearances, so at this time, if there's anyone in the audience who is here this evening and wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda, this would be your opportunity to come forward and share what's on your mind. If you are here for an item on the agenda, we will do everything and try to give you every opportunity to speak to that item. Is there anyone here who wishes to come forward and speak to an item not on the agenda? All right. Seeing no one. Item number six this evening is presentations. Presentation, item six A is the Assessor 2025 Market Adjustment Contract. Administrator Kaker, Mr. Deener, with Fair Market Assessments, if you would.
Thank you. So Joe, why don't you come up from Fair Market Assessments? I'm sure you'll be able to answer some questions that the village board has. Just to give some more context to it, so all of us have an assessed value and an equalized value on our property tax bill. That assessed value is only adjusted when there is a revaluation, or perhaps you had work done on your property where there was a permit issued. The other way that it might be updated is if there is a, an appeal to the board of review for their assessed value. Your equalized value only changes with the state, and the state has a formula for how they work that. And your equalized value is the number that is used by the other three taxing entities to calculate your tax bill. So for example, the school district, the tech college, and Rowell County use that equalized value. We as the village have no say on what your equalized value looks like. Now, the state of Wisconsin has a property assessment document that explains all this process in a very short 976-page document. So I'm not going to go over all of that, but hopefully this gives you a little bit more background on it. So the, the plan would be for Joe to perform a market revaluation done in 2025. The reason for that is the state requires whenever your equalized value and your assessed value are greater than 10% off. So right now, our equalized value or ratio is about 70%. And Joe, that might even be lower than 70%.
Yeah, actually, it's not quite 70%.
Okay. But we're about 30% off of what the equalized value amounts are. So that requires the village to go through this revaluation process. We're required to go through that within five years of falling out of compliance. And it is not cheap to do. That's why we don't do annual evaluations. We wait for this number to hit, and then we, we go through that revaluation process. So we went through our last revaluation back in 2020. The cost of that contract through Fair Market Assessment was $77,000. The proposed contract tonight on the table for the village board is at $88,000. And that's a five-year difference in time. Joe, is there any great detail in there that you want to add to the process?
So with the equalized value, that gets adjusted. Bottom line is, it's based on the sales from the previous year. And the market was extremely high going back the last five years. So we've been out of compliance, you know, only two years since the last time I updated the assessments. So by 2022, we are already at 85%. The 2023 sales, so what you're going to see on your tax bill at the end of this year, our ratio is going to be about 71 and a half percent. So we, the market has slowed down, but it's still increasing. We're, we're seeing about a little over 4% increase, which is quite a bit less than what it was over the last four, three years for sure, when it would be 10 to 15% difference. But, you know, you don't want to fall too far out of compliance because we're doing market adjustments lately on municipalities that the assessments are 12, 13 years old, and people are seeing 60% increases, 65% increases on your assessments. Now, these create, you know, the, the higher assessments is not meaning more taxes. You know, when, if your average increase is, say, a 30% increase, the taxes should stay about the same unless there's large increases in the budget, mainly with school. You know, that's where a lot of the money goes. So if there's changes in, in that spending, then that, that can really make a difference on how much your taxes may or may not go up, but you would see that increase without assessments. Any questions?
Not for me. I mean, we've been discussing this for a while, so this really isn't a surprise. Anybody else have questions?
That border review next year will be in August?
Well, it'll be later than the typical May.
So it won't be in May, then? It'll be?
We will have to meet and adjourn during, you know, probably, Michelle, that was in May, right?
Yes.
So we, when, when the assessments aren't done, within a 45-day window that you're supposed to have border review, we have to take 10 minutes to do a meet and adjourn to a later date. And I'll, I'll have that date at that meeting. But yeah, we're looking at probably, you know, an August or September meeting, or a border review meeting. We usually, you know, we, we do about, we do about eight market adjustments every year, so it's just kind of the pecking order of who we're doing first. I know, like, right now, we got, our last border review is not until end of October. So some of them do go pretty late. So long as the numbers are done before budgets. But yours won't be that late. You don't have to worry about that.
And this is a confusing topic, and so back in 2020, I worked with, I think it was Joe, to put together a frequently asked questions document as it relates to assessments, and I'll be sure to update that document and have that available on our website and social media. Always, the, the first comment will always be, oh, this is to raise my taxes. And we go in-depth in that document to explain why that doesn't mean that your, your taxes are going to increase. Year over year, if you look at Swamaco's tax rate, you've seen an increase of somewhere between 1 to 3%. I would imagine that that would be similar. However, when you go through this revaluation process, let's say it's a 30% increase to your assessed value, you'll see likely around a 30% decrease to the actual tax rate. And then from that number, you might see a 1 to 3% increase to your tax bill. So yes, you might pay more in taxes to the village of Swamaco next year and the year after, but that's not to do with the assessment. It changes the tax rate based on increase in your assessed value.
But specifically, you're talking about the taxes that are charged by the village of Swamaco.
By the village of Swamaco.
So that doesn't, what about the taxes charged by the school district?
So the school district, the tech college, and the county all use your equalized values. This adjustment to your assessed value has nothing to do with your equalized value. The state changes your equalized value.
So will the state change equalized value based on this assessment?
Not on this assessment.
I will get an estimate on what the new equalized value will be for next year, and those are the numbers I have to meet. In order for our assessments to be at 100%, I need to be at that equalized value.
Okay, so you're going to get that equalized value from the state prior to the assessment?
Yeah, they give you, they give us a preliminary. But, you know, we, we have the sales, so we know what to expect. Hopefully, we're not going to see a 10% increase, otherwise, yeah, we're going to, you know, because we, we're at 71 and a half percent, but now I also have to add whatever next year's increase would have been as well. And so, yeah, they, they, when we're, when, when we have market adjustments or revaluations going, they have to let us know what their final numbers look like, so that way we can meet them. You know, they, they tell us the total, and then we just, you know, we gotta come up with that number based on the individual assessments. So the equalized value and the assessed value will be very, very similar next year. And Howard is in there, Howard does every three years, so, you know, the equalized value is one thing, but it, it, it might be kind of nice that Swamaco and Howard, being in the same school district, they'll both have their assessments updated for 2025.
Oh, good. Okay. Any other questions? No?
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the revaluation market adjustment contract with Fair Market Assessments Incorporated. For, you want the number on there?
You can. We'll include it in the 2025 budget, but you're welcome to do that.
For price not to exceed $88,000.
Okay, very good. We have a motion on the floor from Trustee Andrews to approve the revaluation market adjustment contract with Fair Market Assessments in a dollar amount not to exceed $88,000. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second from Mr. Stevens. Why Stevens, and I don't know why I get you confused with somebody who looks like Daniels to me, but anyways. Mr. Stevens, Trustee Stevens. Okay, any other further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I'll take a roll.
Yep, thank you.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Netto?
Aye.
Trustee Roma's?
Aye.
Trustee Stevens?
Aye.
President Ben Rossum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Item?
Do you want to do the contract right now? Right now, I got two copies if you want some.
Sure.
Does that mean you start work tomorrow?
Michelle, you didn't forget anybody's name.
You're a good salesman. Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Item number six B, well number five, project update from Ayers. Director Smith?
Yeah, thank you. So we invited Ayers to come tonight to give us an update where we're at with the well five project. Craig will go through his site plan and where he's at with the submittal for the DNR and DSE. If you have any questions, we can go from there.
Thank you. So, good evening. Craig Shu from Ayers. So, on the screen, I was not going to bring 10 copies and hand out a copy to each one of you, because I did not get it in the pack at the time. But on the screen is a preliminary site plan for the well five location on Northwoods Road. It's the parcel that was purchased a number of years ago by the village. What has been done at that site thus far is the test well that is located on there, the red dock that's labeled test well. That was drilled prior to us kind of laying out this site better, so we know what we have. We have the ability to produce the desired 700 gallons per minute that the, the village would like for this well. And then from that point on, we started laying out based off of the offsets, off of property lines, base sets, base, offsets based off of the sanitary sewer and so on and so forth, and the contours of the property. We laid out a preliminary building and a well five location for the permanent well. I know that commission has seen it, so two of you have seen this already. But we're just kind of putting pen to paper on the size of the building based off of the equipment and so on and so forth. We tentatively put a 60 by 42 box on there, and we also show a waste tank, because if there is treatment for radium, you have to have a backwash process with HMO as a treatment option. It would go to the waste tank, then it would be metered out slowly to your collection system. The circles with the dash circles, that is the potential water tower location, so it is located on this same site as well. I know you're just seeing it now, but that's kind of the basic ideas. We laid this out. We have to submit a rough layout plan with the Public Service Commission's authorization request. That authorization request is on the jump drive that Alex has as well. It is 70 pages that we have put together. We need to review with village staff to finalize prior to our submission, but we're hoping to do that in the next week and a half to two weeks. And that goes out to Public Service Commission. And then we would like to start the process of bidding well number five's permanent well. Contractors for, for drilling are out about three to four months right now, best case scenario. So we're hoping that this would be drilled early next spring. We would work on design of the documents for the building and treatment. Those would go to the DNR June 30th of next year, along with a safe drinking water loan application for your funding source. And then there would be review, and this would potentially be a late 2025, early 2026 construction start for the building and water tower.
I know trustee Stevens wanted to see this, and I think it's a really good thing because it gets everybody a chance to see this is what we're going to do. It's not a quick process, but it, it's something that's in the works, and it doesn't need to be a surprise to anybody then. So.
So I know that there is some discussions about water tower versus tank. Where in this process do we make that decision?
Yeah, I think the Public Works and Utility Commission kind of hashed out the pros and cons, advantages, disadvantages to each option, cost versus your initial overhead versus what's best long-term. And the consensus of the utility commission is they would like to see a tower versus the reservoir at this time. You're using gravity for as long as that tank is there in your favor. You don't have to worry about backup energy and pumps failing and replacement of parts. So the best long-term solution would be the tower, and that's kind of what they weighed in, you know, as we made our decision moving forward.
And some of us are skeptical for different reasons. Mine would be more the size of it, so that it's size appropriate, because there's really not a lot of fields left to develop, or I, I just don't want something too big that the water customers have to pay for. But.
Yeah, we would still put together a sizing, or we'd study the size of it and then analyze exactly what's going to be needed for our serviceable area.
As, as part of the Public Service Commission authorization request, there is calculations that we need to show. One, based off of the test well, and two, what we think will be needed for the tower. And we, we want to have more input from village staff, but we're in that 250 to 300 range right now with rough calculations.
That'll probably be a mid-next-year decision when we get to that point.
Yeah, probably.
So everything you see and hear right here tonight is just to get the actual test, or the, the permanent well drilled. So hopefully, the intent is to get the drilling done over the course of this winter or early spring. And at that point, we'll repump it, test it, analyze the water one more time, and then from that point forward, we will, Ayers and Donnie will start the design process for the structure, the well, the building, and all that good stuff, and the treatment as needed, and the size of the tower.
And potential future needs too, because I just, I want it to be sized right. And still, I'm still skeptical, and for what that's worth.
There were, you know, not shown on this is, you're also, as part of this, this is an area that has low water pressure, so it is anticipated to have a PRV, a pressure-reducing valve and station, to have two pressure zones, so that would be the first and second zones in the, a secondary zone in the, in the village.
With, you had shared some preliminary budgets, and you've got other projects, I'm sure, just like this. With the construction in '25, '26, what kind of pricing escalators are you going to see? And is it consistent with the budgets that you shared with us?
So the, as the individual prior to me had said, construction costs have slowed down quite a bit. The biggest driver for cost increases that we've seen the last six months are electrical components. They're still slow to arrive. There still is 12 to 18 months for a automatic transfer switch or a generator, switchgear like that, soft starts for the pumps and motors that you're going to have in a building like that. Those are the big things that are holding up and increasing costs, but that's not the large portion of this. You know, the large portion is the piping, the tank itself, so steel has not gone up to that same level. And I can't predict what's going to happen tomorrow or November, per se. But right now, we're not seeing, we're putting 4% on for a year, and that was in that budget that we anticipated.
Just saying, long story short, he says we're going to make 9.5 for sure. Great, Craig?
Careful how you answer that.
We're being recorded, so I will.
So, again, this, I'm new to this, this process of building water towers. Is this typically a fixed bid, or is it not to exceed numbers? Or how, how are these contracts structured?
So as we put the plans and specifications together, we will then request a bid for the actual construction of the building, and the water tower will be separate. The contractors are just too different. And they will be lump sum bids, and as part of the building, they will be required to give us a, a schedule of values so that we understand if they have, if it's a $5 million building, that they have another $1 million in electrical or another million in piping. However that works out, dollar-wise, we need to see that so that we can do construction cost estimates and pay applications for them when they're under contract with the village.
And so what's the forecasted date that you think we're going to have all these bids in, and you're going to sit at that table along with Andy and share with us? This is the road we're going down.
So, that's a great question. So we're planning, as, as we're moving forward here right now, PSE submittal in October. We want to then approach the commission here in October with a anticipated layout of the building, so that would be late October. And then we would like to move forward with that design this winter with the goal to have that submitted to the DNR as their schedule is for a June 30th submission for the safe drinking water. Then it's kind of out of our hands until they give us the approval of that plan set through the DNR review agency to go ahead. Once they get that, and the funding's all in place with the finance director, and we have a loan closure process set up, we would then build the project, or bid the project out. Right now, if I was giving you a best guess, it would be a late fall of '25 bidding schedule with a, you know, with the construction start of '26. Thank you.
All right. Those were good questions. Other questions? None? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
It's a long haul. Yep, thank you. It's a big project. Okay. So, item number seven this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of previous minutes of the village board dated August 19th, 2024, and special August 29th, 2024 meetings. Also, item B, 2024 fire reports for July 2024, August 2024. The August 2024 recreation report, the August 2024 municipal court report, the item E, amendments to the combination Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B beer licenses for September 28th, 2024. Item number one, Station One Brewing Company and Music Hall LLC, 1745 Riverside Drive, Swamaco, Wisconsin, 54313, Agent Peter Apps. And two, Four Way Bar LLC, 1801 Riverside Drive, Swamaco, Wisconsin, 54173, Agent James L. Whiting. Is this zip code, just out of curiosity, just reading this, so Station One has a zip code of 54313? Or is that, no, it's 54313, and another, Four Way has 54173?
That would be actually incorrect for the physical location for Four Way. The mailing address for James Whiting, his zip code is 54173.
Okay.
But it should be 54313 for the location of the business.
Okay, just out of curiosity. One comment I'd make before we look for a motion on this is, so Park and Rec report, thank you for the numbers. They were very valuable, you know, in looking at it. And just recapping, there was 145 program participants across the board, which I think is phenomenal. And then also looking at the shelter usage, you know, what, what I think is really interesting is looking at the shelter usage this year. So if we look at '21 to '22, there was a 26% increase in shelter usage, and then '22 to '23, a 13% increase in shelter usage. Thus far this year, we've seen a shelter, well, '23, '24. If we use those numbers and extrapolate on those numbers, we'd see a 2% shelter increase. So I'm very curious to see if those numbers pan out. And I guess the reason I'm asking, I asked for these numbers, you know, when we get to budget time, park and rec is always, seems to be kind of, kind of always seated at the little table, if you will. And usually, the, not necessarily the benefactor of foresight and looking forward. When we look at these numbers, what we actually start to see is we see significant usage by program participants and potential revenue streams, and we also see, you know, usage in shelters, which are pretty significant. We made some investments in our shelters, and we, and, and our parks, and we saw greater usage in those parks and greater usage of those shelters. It'll be interesting to see as we move forward, and the pattern seems to indicate that our shelters and our parks are getting more usage than they have in the past. That harkens back to the thing that we've talked about in this meeting, and I continue to bring up to everybody's probably particularly trustee Eckert's nausea, is, is the fact that this is part of our value proposition, you know, our parks, our programs, our participation. This is a big part of what, what Swamaco is, and I think we need to take a hard look at, you know, when it comes to budget time. Obviously, there are priorities, but the numbers seem to indicate that this should get a good look. There you go.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
So we have a motion from trustee Roma's to approve the consent agenda, and a second from trustee Eckert. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. All right. We are off to item number eight this evening, which is eight A, which is the village board trustee interviews and possible appointment. Administrator Kaker?
Thank you. So as directed by the village board at our last village board meeting, I did advertise a call for applicants to fill the trustee vacancy created by trustee Schneider. His term was set to expire in April of 2025. I did advertise that in a number of areas, including our website and social media. I did advertise that in a number of areas, including our website and social media. I also saw the Press Times put out a piece on it, so thank you for that. And we received eight applications. And since that time, we've had two applicants withdraw, which leaves us to six. Don Rija, who is still on that, that list, uh, was one of those that withdrew his application. And, uh, so tonight we have some questions that I received from several village board trustees. There are four questions. These questions were all sent to the applicants back on, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday of last week. So they've had some time to think about it. And the village board, uh, at this time just needs to decide how they want to go through the ordering of who comes up first and who comes up last. Right now I have a list, uh, in your packet that's just listed by alphabetical order, uh, first name, alphabetical order. And the village board may want to discuss, excuse me, uh, how they want to go about actually selecting somebody if you are interested in appointing somebody. It could be as simple as just somebody making a motion to appoint a person and seeing if there's a second. That is one route that you could go. There is other options out there. You could do a, like a ranked choice voting process if you felt that was more appropriate. But that's something that you may want to discuss before you start the actual interview process. That's all I've got for you. If there are any questions that you have of me, I'm happy to answer those.
Maybe just one or two things real quick. So we have six individuals here. We have four questions. So it would be my preference to have those questions asked in whatever order he should so choose by the administrator. Have him share those questions, have the administrator choose the order to keep it as non-biased as possible. And the other thing I would recommend is, you know, if we, unfortunately, I want to give everybody as much time as it, I'd like to give everyone as much time as possible, but we could be here a very, very long time indeed. So, um, my recommendation would be perhaps setting a time limit on questions, um, if that's acceptable to the board. Does anybody have a recommended? So I just did some quick math. If we have four questions, we have six people, we have five minutes per question.
Sounds like a hundred and twenty minutes.
Mm-hmm. Two hours. Do we go three minutes?
How about, uh, five minutes for all four questions? Person could take as much time on one question or another question. So maybe someone feels strongly or has a, a lot to say about one thing, but maybe not as much to say about another.
Anyone else?
I guess. I, I just be mindful, don't be too long. Um, my only concern is I don't want to appoint anybody tonight because I don't think it would be fair without them preparing for the rest of them to, to vote on anything.
I'm not sure I understand.
I don't think they should sit up here tonight. If, if we do pick some, but I, I took you off the topic.
Okay. So, so you would, if we were to choose someone, you would have them sworn in at the next meeting?
I, I guess so, because I, I don't think it's fair to them or to the village that they just pick up and start voting here tonight on issues that they didn't necessarily prepare for.
Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
I support that.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay. So I think that that's what we'll do. So just be aware, you won't be seated this evening. I, I think that makes good sense. Um, give the opportunity to go over the issues and then come, come at it all fresh, um, at the next meeting. So not necessarily a time limit, but just not too long.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I guess I would propose that, um, in all fairness to the first candidate versus the last, that I would have the administrator, um, put the names in a hat and pull a name out of the hat. So it's random.
Do you have a hat? Brian does.
The chief's shirt.
There's gotta be a fire hat somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, okay. So just to clarify, so when you have someone come up, are they answering all four questions? Or are they each answering one question, then going back and then someone else come up and they answer the same question?
Let's, let's have them. All four.
Okay. So if they do come up, we can just leave these questions up on the screen and they can, through their own decisions, go through each question however.
And feel free, feel free, those who are coming up, if there's a question that you just don't feel is particularly relevant or one that's more relevant than others, just let us know. I mean, these questions aren't, uh, there's nothing written in stone here.
And I think, uh, with the times we're in, I can just use a chat GPT to give me random, a random order. Do you not like that?
I'm joking.
Come on.
We would have never known had you not said anything. There's so much we don't know.
Just use a secured website.
No personal information. All right. I hope that's agreeable to everyone who's here this evening and gives you the best opportunity and what you expected. This isn't, this isn't a hard and fast process. We haven't had to go through this a lot, so we're working through it.
All right. So the order is going to be Nikki, Rob, Terry, Thomas, Andy, Brian. So I, at this point, it's really not my role to handle this. I'll pass it off to the village board and you guys can work through this process. Good luck.
Well, that seems a little unfair. Nikki, the floor is yours. Uh, just do provide your name and address for the record, please. Oh, you sure do.
And just be advised that you are on Facebook Live and this will be forever in the internet.
I appreciate the warning.
Wow.
No pressure.
No pressure. Uh, my name is Nicole McKeefrey. Um, I am a long-term resident of Swamaco. I grew up here. I raised all of my children here. I believe that a village board is a means for a community to govern itself. And the reason why I'm applying is because we have an empty seat. I, um, outside of my residency, I have a background in business administration. I'm familiar with board procedure. I believe that I possess the skills necessary to fill the seat in the interim until the Swamaco residents have an opportunity to elect a new trustee. As far as the challenges I see coming through over the next three to five years for Swamaco, probably will involve business expansion. We're attracting a lot of new business to Swamaco and our existing businesses will likely be looking to expand in order to remain competitive. I believe that Swamaco has a nice mix of large chain retailers and also small business. And I would support in maintaining that mixture. Another, uh, challenge, I think, uh, that sometimes is overlooked, is coming across very large in the, um, corporate and organization, across organizations worldwide is technological advancements. I would assume that our board will be faced with some decisions coming from our administration, our law enforcement, uh, for fire and rescue, rescue teams as they try to respond to this ever evolving industry. I have a lot of background in this area and I believe that I would be a great asset to those conversations. As our community grows, I also think we're going to see new housing development to support the new population and also as well as the business develop, development. I think the board's going to be challenged with maintaining, um, both support for the housing development that we need for our new population, but also hanging on to the village charm that is attracting these new families and businesses to our area. As far as assets, I, uh, would, um, our location and our business. I'll sum it up shortly to keep it nice and short. But, uh, overall, when I grew up here, you had to go to Green Bay for everything. And, um, today there's very few items, if any, that you need to venture out of Wisconsin. I think that that convenience factor is a huge, uh, selling point to a lot of new families and businesses coming in. Also, our location is so close to northern Wisconsin activities, um, and vacation areas. Uh, our nature preservation areas like the refrigeration camp and bark house, I think are very unique to Swamaco. And I would support any effort to maintaining and expanding on those. And lastly, our neighborhoods are safe. People generally feel safe here in Swamaco. And I believe we have an engaged community, although I think we can always expand, um, in those, in those efforts. But I would be a, a big supporter in maintaining law enforcement as our population grows to ensure that we do have the proper people and the resources available to keep our safe community. As far as handling differences of opinion, I've taken a lot of leadership programs throughout my, my professional career. One stands out above the rest, um, is Stephen Covey's Seven Habits. If you haven't, I highly suggest. The one principle I, um, have extracted and applied to my professional and personal lives on many occasions over several years is, um, the seek to be, to understand before being understood. I do use this principle often in high conflict situations. I am responsible for facilitating relationships across multiple business lines. Sometimes and many times working in opposite directions, um, both from a sales or an operations perspective. If you're familiar with that business, they usually work in different worlds. I try to ask a lot of questions and try to understand where their perspective is. And although we may end up agreeing to disagree, I think it's important that we understand the why. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's invite, um, Rob Zastro.
Thank you. Do, did the board members get a chance to review some of our, uh, background information?
Your applications were included in the packet.
Okay. Okay. What is the purpose of the village board? Well, I think it says right there trustee. That's what we, we have asked our village board to be operating seriously on our behalf of all the citizens. We don't have wards. We don't have, uh, it's a, it's kind of a village at large. And I think it's important that, uh, the people that sit in this room are responsible for a lot of the things that have happened, have changed. And we look forward to, uh, that continued effort by this board. I would welcome and be pleased to be afforded the provision, or the, uh, privilege of doing that, same thing. What are the challenges? I see there's three challenges. Residential and commercial development appear to be stalled in most respects. Uh, we saw what happened in the last five years with COVID and the cost of living and goods and services are skyrocketing. I see that as a real challenge to whether or not we can have a good, a tax assessment and have people pay their fair share without having to make a decision to downsize to another community because we haven't been able to raise that tax. The other thing would be the cost of, uh, sanitary service. We've got a sanitary district and I understand that, I'm not in that district, but I understand that there's some rising costs that have already hit and are going to continue to hit. And I don't think the, uh, the, uh, N E W people are going to change their mind. They've got some money that they need to have and we're gonna, our users are gonna get, uh, taxed for the increase in cost of those. My other concern is we have a, we have a very automobile related society here. We have no public transportation. People can't come and go to our community without either a taxi or a car. And I think that we've heard, uh, I served on the, uh, I've been serving on the, the planning commission. We hear that employers are having a problem getting help out here because some people just don't, can't or won't afford a car and they can't get out here. And that affects really our, uh, the entire stratification of, of, of our workforce. Most of Swamaco are probably people that work in and around Green Bay metro area in very good paying jobs. But we've got to look at the blue collar end of this thing right now. And, um, I would like to see if there's an opportunity to share some of those costs with our, our neighborhood communities. The next one is, uh, those are my challenges. Assets. Well, I think, uh, the most important thing is we look around us and it's already been mentioned. We've got recreation. We've got a bay. We've got a river. We've got a lot of green space. Those are things that lend themselves to people feeling like they're in a, in a good community rather than, than, uh, just someplace where there's no neighborhood and there's no neighbors. The next one would be, uh, we have planned development. We have had since the days of this being a, uh, a township and we've added to that. As you can see, I've been instrumental in, 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 afforded the privilege to serve on a lot of those things as we went through these various sizes and buildings and building of, uh, municipal center, the one we're in here right now and the two previous. Those are the kind of things that I look forward to. I think we need to, we need to shake, you know, shake the hands of people who want to come here and, and show them and, and welcome them with some of these, these types of services. I think the one of the most important ones that are kind of behind the scenes, but we've got municipal services, fire, medical, first responder that are second to none in this Brown County area. And I'm very happy with that. My family's suffered some problems where we've had an opportunity to use those. And we can be very proud of those that our chief and our, our board here have seen the need for those. The, uh, Brown County contract for our sheriff's department is also exemplary, very, very professional people. And I think it's, it's, it's part of our quality of life here that they're here to represent what should be done and, and remind people when that isn't, isn't the case. What would I do with, uh, different opinions? Well, I've, I've got a lot of experience, uh, twenty-six, almost twenty-seven years in the military as a commissioned officer. And I've also been on these committees and, and, uh, the board and so forth. There always are different opinions. I always say you're entitled to your own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. And I think what I would like to participate in is gathering facts through our, our board, our different, uh, subcommittees. Ask them what they have, what we need to do, listen to citizens and, and respect all of those rather than being very rigid, like, uh, this is my idea and you don't have the same idea. I find in most cases after review, there's ninety-five percent of people are having like similarities in their opinions. It's just sometimes in this day and age, we get out front with a, with a statement and then we, we try to ram that statement through for, as a victory. And I think it's the other way around. I really enjoy working with committees. I've sat up in your chairs for a long time and long meetings and so forth. But at the end of the day, we're looking for the facts that can give us the best shot at, at a solution to a problem or at least alleviating those problems. Is there anything I missed? By the way, I made a mistake in my, uh, background. I was never a member of the zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure we ever had one. I was a member of the board of adjustment, which is what was just discussed previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Mister, or could be missed as well, Terry Fulmer. Terry. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello there.
So the village is obviously the governing board for a community. And as a trustee, you're responsible for the legislation, the administration of the tax dollars and the overall wellbeing for the community as a whole. I served for the village of Richmond, Illinois for over five years. In that time, I was appointed finance chair. We had great developments in finance. In fact, turning a budget that had been perpetually in the red into the black. I was voted unanimously as president pro tem when our village president had health concerns and I served for just about eight weeks, but had some accomplishments in that time. The reason I want to serve here is I, I come to you as essentially a new resident, only about two years' time. I have a young family and I sought out Swamaco as opposed to many other villages and such. And I want to keep Swamaco as the little gem that my, my family found, which is what brings me here today. So knowing the issues, et cetera, that Swamaco faces, I don't necessarily know them and I wouldn't want to be presumptuous, but I can tell you the reasons I came here. First and foremost, safety, and I'm a big proponent of public safety. I'm also a driver of growth and I find that Richmond has this beautiful coupling of that down home country feel with a lot of modern amenities. And I'd like to be a driver of growth, which I did do for the village of Richmond, Illinois. I know how to find the bigger players and bring them to the village. And I could talk more about that if, if you'd like to hear about it. As far as varying opinions, I think competition for thought brings about the best thought. And I've also come to learn sadly, my opinion's not always correct. So if there are any other opinions, I'd love to hear them. And from that, we can formulate either better opinions or, you know, allow the thought compete and the prevailing one wins, so to speak, at least on a board anyway. compete, and the prevailing one wins, so to speak, at least on a board anyway. I serve as chief strategy officer for S&amp;S Painting and Restoration, and have already brought in many new lines of business. And having said that, if I was appointed as trustee, I would like to bring that sort of mindset of strategy and growth here to Swamaco. Any questions or anything I may have missed? I guess not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you must be Thomas Giezy.
Yes. Thank you for your time, Tom Giezy. Been a resident of Swamaco for 24 years approximately, and I'm gonna take the questions out of order because I, I feel like they're all interrelated anyway. One of the assets of Swamaco, and we've heard it from some of the other applicants, a rural residential community. And it, and that's what drew me here, that's what draws a lot of people to this community is that you can live here and, and it feels like a countryside, and it's just a nice feeling. One of the other assets is a school system, and also a sense of community. The sense of community, we've discussed several times today, our usage of the parks, our usage of the village programs. Vicarry Village has music on Tuesday nights, lots of different things that everyone participates in, and it makes our community great. Challenges to the community, I think, are to keep that rural residential feel, but also to allow for growth, to make sure that we're supporting our, our water and sewer system, and that growth needs to occur in a planned manner, and, and I think that's a very important part of what the, the board does, and that's why I said all these questions are interrelated. The planning is a, a very particular aspect of, of being on the village board. Things that are gonna come up are gonna be traffic, things that we have to discuss all the time, our inflation, we've seen today that the assessment went up 14% from five years ago. The well number five went up, I don't know what the number is, I'm on the public works committee, but it, it went up a lot over the last couple of years. These are things that the village has to take into consideration to make sure that we don't fall behind, but also we've got to keep costs down for the people that move here, or the people that are already living here. So, in other words, the board is responsible for planning, for being a steward of the people's money, and also being a conduit for the, the people that live here so that they can, they can share their views with us as, as a board, and, and that we make sure we represent them correctly. Regarding conflict, I think owning a business for 20-some years right now, and raising a family are all things that prove that people need to keep open lines of communication, use active listening, and active discussion to make sure that things are taken into consideration, and everyone listens to everyone and hears their views. I can't think of anything else, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, Andy Congdon.
Good evening.
I'm Andy Congdon, 2901 Harbor Winds Drive. So, let's go down the list one by one here. So, purpose of the village board, that's the, you know, the governing body tasked with making decisions, financial and otherwise, delegates to the lower committees, things that need to be done, which is brought up to you guys, which ultimately is voted on. So, top three challenges facing Swamaco, and how would you go about? So, I see three challenges. One is cost of living, namely water utilities and housing. Those are probably the two biggest ones, it's always a hot button. Whenever we do our survey every year, people are always saying those are the problems that we've got, is the water is, is expensive. So, I see that as a symptom of a larger problem, a lack of future planning. So, I know that the comp plan is coming up, and the, I work on the zoning board, have been there for, commissioned, been there since 2017. We're starting to take a proactive reach to it, which I think is a good thing, to try to get some ideas in the tank before we start thinking about what the comp plan would look like. I just, I think there's been a resistance to development in the community, which has kind of stifled growth here, which raises costs for everybody, and, and the people that are currently here have to foot the bill year over year. Whether we like it or not, the, this is kind of like a business. Costs are always gonna chase from behind, you gotta figure out how to stay ahead of those costs. If you can't, if you can't have any more new growth, you gotta find it from somewhere, and it's either gonna be the taxpayers, or it's gonna be growth. And it's, it's that or that. You can cut, you can cut, you can cut, but there's eventually, you're gonna find yourself with nothing left to cut, and you're just gonna be, that cost will never stop coming up behind you. And that's, that's a, every business is like that, they're always looking for new revenue, new ways to get money, you know, and it's not like you just need to do it to save your face, but you have to do it in a smart way that also preserves what we have here. So, I think that's one of the biggest problems that we've got, you know, type number two, loss of access to largest target assets. Buildable area is a huge one. So, we only have so many areas here. Swamaco will never be a sea of apartments because the swamps don't let us. We, there's no way you can be Howard or Hobart, because it's just the way our land is here, we have to do things like conservation by design, where you put a few things close together and have the surrounding natural beauty around it. And that's just kind of how we're gonna have to go ahead with, and being smart with how we do our developments. Doing, you know, that would get us through that. Smart debt management, you know, it, it's not always good to borrow money, but sometimes it's, it's a really good thing to borrow money. So, when you, when you do borrow, as long as your return on investment, it's always about ROI. If you can get your money back and more, it was a good deal. And that's, that's what, and that every business will look at that and say, if you can make more money and make everything better by taking debt, it's not a bad thing. So, you shouldn't get debt out of hand, you shouldn't go nuts and then find yourself underwater when times get hard, but you have to be smart. I think one other giant problem is the growth of neighboring communities. I think what happens with Hobart and Howard and DePere and different communities that are sort of similar to ours is that people, it's not hard to move a quarter mile to Howard and have more amenities and, and a better community if we start having financial issues here. It's gonna be very easy to move on over to there. So, there, whether you like it or not, they are a competitor in a certain sense, and we have to make sure that we can, you know, maintain our population and our attractiveness here. Swamaco's top three assets going forward, I think proximity to Bay of Green Bay is by far, I'm a fisherman, I like fishing, so I'm pretty biased on that one. So, if I can get out there anytime I can, I'm out there. So, we, we don't have a ton of access here to one of the greatest, I mean, though the Great Lakes, it's the Midwest, it's a huge thing, you know, and we're right up against it, and we don't have a whole lot of ways to get to it. So, any kind of expansion of park trails, anything to get out to there, I think would be a good thing to try to do that. School system, that's number two, is probably one of our biggest assets, you know, we share that with Howard, but it's, it's, it's one of the reasons that me and my family moved here, was the school system is a very good school system. You know, I grew up in Marinette originally, so Bayport was always kind of our enemies, and I, it's gonna be kind of tough to go, you know, and pirates, but it's, it's something I'm looking forward to, so. But the problem with costs, if, if we, if we can't keep up with our costs, and we have to find it from somewhere. So, to keep these great schools, we gotta find these, we've gotta find money, we've gotta find growth, we gotta find a way to be able to afford these things in a long-term sense. You know, right might be working now, but you know, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, it might not, what we're doing now may not be working. So, looking forward is kind of what I like to look at. Let's see, all right. With the number three, probably the most important top asset that we have is the people here. The people here are awesome. So, I love my neighbors, I have a really good neighbor system, I, I'm really happy here with the people that live here. I think if we don't have a forward-facing view, the problem will be, Father Time is undefeated. The people are either going to be priced out of this place or die, and then we're not gonna have this community anymore. It's not gonna be the same thing. It's gonna be people that are gonna buy these places or vacant, or whatever it's gonna be. In the future, we don't know. And then all communities are the same, there's no one, nothing lasts forever. But if we can kind of culture this community to be the same or similar to what it is, and we can invite more people into our community to share our values, we can continue this city in a good way, and I think that's an important thing. I think having this community and continuing it on in a good way without letting it decay and go away is paramount. Managing difference in opinions, I have a private practice, I'm a eye doctor, and I have 11 employees, so it may not be like a major corporation, but I also think working with 11 employees is a lot more intimate and can be a lot more difficult when you're dealing with issues, you know, it's basically like a family. So, conflict resolution is tough, so I think one of the important saying that I've always kind of held true to is, it takes someone to have an opinion, it takes an intelligent someone to entertain someone else's opinion. Listening to other people is an important way to grow and figure out who you are and figure out what's actually right. And it's not, it's okay to be told you're wrong, and it's okay to actually be wrong if you understand it later that you're wrong. Growing is important, and, and listening to people and not belittling them, or, or, you know, it's one of the reasons I don't really subscribe to any major political party. I think if you, if you, if you go towards one party, you're gonna have a hard time listening to the other side, which sometimes has ideas that may actually be beneficial, beneficial the most, you know? So, I think a little respect goes a long way, you know, if you just tell people that you respect them, I think they, they work on that. So, point of emphasis, I just want to end with this, I am on the zoning board, or the zoning commission, I would like to maintain that, you know, I think, do, do we need two board members on that, the zoning commission? Is that, you need two board members?
You, typically, we've carried two board members, we have the option, you know, given this circumstance, to maintain three board members on there for a temporary period?
Because it would only be two then, right? Or would it be, who else is the other board member on there? Because...
There's only, there's only one right now. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right, so it'd be two. So, you'd fulfill that kind of like thing if I stayed on that, which I would, would prefer to do. Also, I am the only applicant to have run in the past six months for this position. This position was open, you know, in April, April 2nd. It's easy to apply for this, put your name on something, say you're great, which, all the candidates are good, actually, I, I like all these people, they're very good. But it's easy to apply and do this, you know, it's not easy to go door-to-door, look at 1,000 people in the face and say, hey, this is why you should vote for me, you know? I received 1,081 votes, which is about a third of the whole votes of the whole thing. So, if, if anybody else were to make this position, they would receive a total of the max six. So, I think that should be weighed in there. So, had there been three seats open then, I'd be there. So, there's three seats open now, in a sense, in the same year. So, that's my pitch for you guys, you know? I have any, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise. Get you up.
Anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we have Brian Schultz.
My name is Brian Schultz, I have about 3595 Somail Court in Swamaco here. I look at the board here, it's nice to meet you finally, I haven't been here in a long time, since 2007 to be exact, for a meeting, and I am very excited that we have all these good candidates here today. We have some excellent talent here, and I'm very proud to sit with them and say that they're, they, any one of these would do a good job. So, that being said, I'll, I'll move on. Village board, the village board is politics, and politics means people doing what they can't do for themselves. The village is put here in charge to do things to help out everybody, the people's people working for the people. So, it's important to know that what your decisions you make, you dat, you gather the data and get the information that entrusts your power for them to do well. Challenges, I think the biggest challenge that government has is costs. Everything goes up in price, you have to keep your costs down as best to your ability. Obviously, our schools keep expanding, people keep moving here, so we need more services. All this costs money, and our challenge is to try to hold that down without suffering in any way. Top three assets, comprehensive plan is always called as a rural area, we have a country, we have a country atmosphere, the lots are rather large, we have a great park system, and we have a lot of wonderful people that live here. Our assets are more than just geographic, they're the people that live here, and they move here. And they move here for good reason, it's safe, it's wonderful, it's very country, and there's no crime. There's no crime in Swamaco, speak of that I know of. How do you manage opinions? Opinions are ideas. Everybody has an idea of what they think is correct for them. People have children, think differently than people who don't have children. It's always important to listen to what they have to say and what they feel is important to them. What's important to me may not be important to the people down the street if there's a park by me. Opinion's always great, and I love that he said that my opinion isn't always right, because I love to be wrong, because that means someone's smarter than me, and that's a good thing, it's not a rare thing. So, with that, I'd like to thank the board, I'd like to thank the employees here for having us tonight, I know this wasn't easy for you all, and I don't know how you're gonna be able to pick, it's gonna be very challenging. Last time we were, I was on the board, we made a motion, but we had two people. It was pretty easy to do with two people. Now you have a handful, so I, I applaud your challenges, and thank you for your time.
Questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, well, my compliments to you all, you did an exemplary job of getting through this very quickly. So, I think maybe let's, let's start off by maybe, is there anyone who'd like to make any comments?
Well, I just want to say what I said last time is, I believe this is an elected position, I don't think we should be appointing. I just wanted to get that out there again.
Okay. Other comments?
I would like to echo Brian's comment, I think a group of people that showed up there are amazing people. Every one of you, I think, would do a good job on this board. And if it doesn't happen tonight, April is election, that's just right around the corner.
You know, I'm gonna echo that comment, because for, for all of these, since I've been a, a portion of village government, a piece of village government since 2010, you know, my original seat was, I was appointed to fulfill a term back in 2010. And you know what, there hasn't been a lot of interest in these positions, which is a shame. Tonight, I hope, represents more than just appointing someone, potentially appointing someone to make us a whole board. I hope it's, I hope it's a shape and the, and the vision of things to come, because what I just heard in this room, you know, with, with each of you, was ideas that are so needed, and, you know, the willingness to accept different opinions. So, you know, whatever comes of this, this evening for each of you, and whatever decision this board makes, I, I'm just thrilled to have had this opportunity to have this conversation and hear from all of you. So, if there are no other comments, so, there's a couple of ways we can go about this. We, I'll, I'll leave it to the board. How would the board like to go about this? Would you like to do a ranked choice, or would you like to go through motions? Or you don't have anything, should we just start with motions? Yes?
I have an idea, well, I'll throw it out there. Ranked choice, so, following essentially the same kind of voting system that you would see if this was an actual vote. So, if we have six candidates who are going to run for this office, bear with me, there would be a primary, and then it would be down to two, and then the, the two would be selected. Because I think what my concern about the ranked choice is that we may not end up with a majority vote of the board for a person to move to the position of trustee, and I don't know if that's a problem for anybody or not, I don't necessarily even know if it's a problem for me, I just throw that out there. So, it'd be two votes essentially, one is a primary, top two vote-getters move on to the final vote. Or simply, I'm also good with ranked. Just a thought, throwing it out there as an idea.
Anyone else? Otherwise, we can go, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I don't like the primary thing.
Okay.
What would you prefer?
Um, make your motion.
Make a motion for an individual?
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay. Does anyone have a motion right away at the top of their mind, otherwise I'll throw one out there?
I'll, I'll have a, a motion, I would like to, a motion that we move forward and have Andy part of the board.
So, just a, it's just a quick amendment to that motion, so, or in addition to that, so the motion from trustee Stevens is to appoint Andy Congdon potentially as a, as a interim board member.
Right.
Seeding him at the next board meeting. Are you okay with that amendment?
I'm very okay with that, yep.
Then I would second that motion. So, we have a motion on the floor from trustee Stevens, as stated, and I have seconded that motion. Well, since this is such an official proceeding, let's do this as Well, since this is such an official proceeding, let's do this as a roll call.
Trustee Eckert.
Nay.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Nay.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Nay.
President Fenrazum.
Aye.
Tie, so it fails, three to three.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that Brian Schultz be placed in the position of, or appointed as trustee at the next meeting. However, that language has to be.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. We do not have a second. Is there another, so motion fails, is there another motion?
I'll make a motion to select Nikki McKeefry.
I'll second.
So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Andrews to appoint Nicole McKeefry and a second from trustee Romes. Could we also do a roll call, please?
Trustee Neto.
Nay.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Stevens.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
President Fenrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries, five to one.
Very good, thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for your time.
This is a messy, messy process.
And December 1st is the first day to circulate papers.
That's an excellent reminder.
Nikki, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, moving on, fire department items, discussion regarding future fire department apparatus needs, Chief Burtler.
Thank you. Our next two tenders, so tenders are trucks that just kind of haul water, are both due for replacement in the next four years and are part of the equipment replacement reserve schedule. Due to lead times and new emission standards, all vendors stated that prices will increase with that exact level B. From their guessing is between $60,000 or 60,000, yeah, $60,000, $100,000 in the next year. We're coming forth now since one tender is up in 2026 and one due in 2028. With lead times being three years, we most likely won't get this truck until at least late 2027, most likely probably 2028. We're not looking for anything tonight, just as more informational, we're looking at the next village board meeting to come with formal proposals and formal proposals from our vendors, but possibly making the decision then to purchase maybe one or two tenders then, so. I don't know a lot about the emission standards, I don't work for the EPA, I think that maybe one of you know, but because it has, you know, new motors coming out and that are just being designed. The price, that's the biggest increase is they're thinking between 1600,000 dollars. Then they'd also give us a discount if we ordered two at the same time, so. Looking for any questions at this time, but like I said, next village board meeting would be a formal presentation.
I realize these are older trucks, but
Correct.
there's only like 7,000 and 11,000 miles on their odometers. They haven't been heavily used.
Correct.
I guess it's, it's difficult, the idea, the thought of getting two brand new ones when these, these are kind of, they're pretty new already. How much would a refurb be?
I'm not sure, they, when talking with the vendors, by the time you refurbish it, with everything that needs to go into it, you're, you're not saving a ton of money. Your return on the investment, talk about that, is not worth it. At the end of the day, you still have, if you say you don't go with that decision, you purchased a new one in 10 or 20 years, you've still have a 40-year-old truck. I can, I can get those numbers for you, but they advised against it, I mean, maybe it's sales too.
Who advises against it?
The vendors, which they're going to, obviously, right? I mean, it's later to make the money on the refurbs, but the, at the end of the day, in, in 20 more years, you have a 40-year-old truck, which, you know, our engine, and I get, they don't have a lot of miles on it, but it is a maintenance, I mean, we don't have a lot of miles on our engine and that thing is, we're band-aiding every day. And, you know, we're, hopefully we're getting that, supposed to get it next year and it's not going to be till 2026. Then we've stuck a lot of money into just band-aiding it. So you're right, they, is a lot of miles, but you have to realize that our trucks, you can't go just off the mileage. They get a lot of wear and tear, just a lot of runtime, just like a cop car. They might sit at a scene for four, five, six hours and they're still, that's always running. So just because the miles isn't there, doesn't really mean it's not used a lot or has a lot of wear and tear on it.
But a refurb wouldn't be a Band-Aid. Could, could you come back with refurb numbers as well?
I can come back with those numbers.
An option?
Yep.
I mean, especially, we're talking two brand new trucks here, when, yeah.
No, I, I hear you.
With that refurb, could you also come back with the longevity, longevity of that truck then too?
Yeah, and like, I mean, it's, 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 that's a, that's a guessing game, really, I mean.
Well, it is on a new one too.
You should be able to predict some stuff. How long some stuff will last.
Yeah. We can do that.
It'll make the decision easier.
Do you have a sense for how many hours, you mentioned runtime, how many hours in each of these trucks?
Without, it might say the run hours on there, I'm not sure, I, I'd be guessing.
Would you, would you check on that?
Yep, I can.
My lawnmower has a runtime on it.
Without a doubt.
So it would be interesting, and what I'd like to know in addition to that is the runtime on each one of those tenders? And, you know, are there industry standards recommended for those? You know, I, I agree, the expense is, is significant, you know? On the other hand, when I think about a refurb, sorry, I'm going to step back, one more piece of it, resale on these? Would like to know the resale that would go back into potentially reducing these costs.
So the resale, we do have a, I mean, I haven't, haven't reached out to anybody, but I had people reach out to me that wanted to buy them, some up north departments that, I mean, they threw numbers out, out at me that were fairly good, so I guess that's a good sign too. So I, I mean, we take care of our equipment, which.
I mean, that mitigates the cost.
Oh, yeah.
Could mitigate the cost, I mean, if you're talking about $200,000 in some cases, you know, which I would think, you know, that.
I'm thinking, I mean, what they threw at me was about $100,000 each, so.
Okay, well, something to think.
Whether, whether they actually, you know, but I think we could get some decent money. We're going to get more for their tenders than we are our engines.
My only concern on refurbs is if you're, if you're running a tanker truck out to a fire and there's, you're running out a refurb and it's a refurb and something goes wrong, the refurb breaks, doesn't get out there with the water and the house is burning to the ground. Who, who, who wears that badge of honor? Right?
Yep, exactly.
Well, all of us, it's the community of Swamaco who wins that badge of honor, wears that.
Well, what happens if a new one does that too? Because there's always that potential and, and, and we're not talking like a little Band-Aid, we're talking about an overhaul here. I mean, they're big diesel engines.
I think it should be explored, I agree with you, I'm glad you brought up the point.
Yeah. We definitely asked that question, I can guarantee you asked that question and.
Yeah, give me more numbers.
The refurb on it was, there wasn't really a cost savings, I mean, there was, but there, to buy new wasn't, it wasn't like, wow, we definitely got the refurb out. It just, which is why we didn't go down that path, but we can def, we'll, I'll definitely get those numbers for you.
Other, other questions? Comments for Mr. Burtler? Anything? Okay, thank you for bringing this forward. Okay. Moving on to item number 10 this evening, which is the planning and zoning items, potential four-way deck addition and amendment to parking agreement, zoning administrator dunks.
Thank you. The four-way bar is looking to add a small deck area on the west side of their outdoor patio area. It's mainly for gaming. They currently use that portion of the parking lot for their cornhole games. They would like to be able to use it with alcohol. Alcohol is restricted, it's not allowed in that parking lot. So putting a deck in there and fencing it properly would allow that to be a part of their licensed area to serve. It does, it did appear to affect only a single parking stall, I guess that's motorcycle parking there. When the fire department took some measurements, the fire lane is not large enough with that there. We would have to relocate the two, the first two handicap stalls. So we'd be losing two actual parking stalls and then the motorcycle parking area. Looks like the total proposed is about 12 foot by 40 to 54 foot long. It does have that angle along that hut. Access would be from the east off of the existing patio. We did have discussion with our, our police officers, our DEOs, and we would all oppose any access from grade two this deck. All access should be from the already licensed patio area. It's too hard to track if they put stairs down off of that deck. It's blocked by the wall of that existing outdoor area and would be difficult for them to, to watch it like they're supposed to be doing. So they would not want that to be an option with the stairs. And we would also like, well, Jamie was, was not, was expected to be here tonight, he had a, a family obligation down in Madison and didn't expect to get back up here in time. So the discussion on playing games further into that parking lot was more for his point. We don't want to see him still moving another cornhole game out into the travel portion of this. This is a shared parking lot for the village overflow of, or parking for Vicry Village. So that was more for his knowing upfront. At this point, it's being brought forward to the village board to see if there's any support. We do need to address our parking agreement with four-way and with Station One Brewing. And before we move forward with any legal fees and expenses, we just wanted to know we had board, board support for that modification. Any actual liquor license amendments would come at a later date. Thank you.
So a question on this, so you're looking at, are you looking at adding a raised deck off to the side?
It would be raised at the same height as the existing.
Currently.
Patio.
And then fenced, so it would be attached to the bar?
Yes, it would have the rails on it and guardrails and, and whatnot.
So any idea, and maybe I missed it in here, looking at that corner of that deck as it comes out, you know, what are we looking at in terms of, from, I'm just thinking about a safety standpoint with people pulling in and out of there. Not necessarily out of there because they have to go around the small gazebo that's there, but pulling in, what kind of buffer would there, would there be? I'm thinking at the, at the corner, at the front corner, at the western facing corner.
That's why those two parking stalls need to be removed so that our fire lane is maintained. We were down to, I believe, 16 feet at that corner. It widens back out by the time because they've got the 20 feet at the corner of the hut to the parking stalls, so.
So where you're arrowing right now, those are parking stalls that would be removed.
Those first two handicapped ones, that's one, and there's one a little bit to the east yet, so.
And then are they replacing those handicap parking?
We would have to relocate them, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And that expense should be, or by four-way.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you, others?
So boil us down, the real question is, is are we okay with the four-way having a deck to play with cornhole on? If everything else legally works out?
The, the real question is, are you okay with removing three parking stalls that were meant for the public?
Okay, so the real question is, are we good with losing three parking stalls so that four-way can have a place to play bags?
Correct.
Okay. Is that parking area then normally filled, overfilled?
Depending on the night, yeah. Tunes on Tuesday, absolutely.
Tunes on Tuesday would be the night.
It would be the night.
When that would happen. Is that parking area then full? Is that what you?
Oh, yeah.
Along with everything else and the roads and.
And when they have weddings and, I mean, there's events that they have that, those are full.
And where do you think the handicap parking are going to go? Is it going to go down there or it's a 60, 60,942?
Yeah, you got one, there's three of them. The third one is on the number 16, so the number three and the number 60. And then there'd be one more yet because you've got a, I believe, because you have to have that van accessible.
Yep.
So.
Other questions?
So what's the distance from the corner of the red to the curbing? Because that's 12 feet out with the red X's there.
Yes.
And then from the corner of that red to the parking spots that you plan to remove? What would that be?
To the. We had about 16 feet between that red and the, the paint on the handicap stalls. And we need 20.
You need 20.
And it widens out as you get to that hut and that gives us our 20 feet by the hut.
And today they can't drink alcohol because they're outside the building?
Correct.
Okay.
They're in the parking lot, so they're currently playing ba, bags in the parking lot?
Yes.
How many handicap does he need?
Well, he has some across the front of his building also. Those are his, those are his specific, these are for our parking agreement.
Okay.
I would assume, because I don't think.
Can you do parallel? I mean, you know.
Instead of coming out at an angle, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Go right up against the curb?
Yeah.
You might be able to relocate like the motorcycle parking there or something, but I don't know how tight fire would want to be on that. Because that is again, the fire lane, if something happens, they got to be able to get to the back of that building. And they've had dumpster fires there in the past, so they need to be able to get through.
So the logistics of all this is really going to be handled by our public safety, our fire and police? The, the real question for you as a governing body in a policy discussion is whether or not you're okay with losing those parking stalls that were agreed upon to be public parking and for everyone and not just for four-way? That's the, the real discussion.
Has Station One been consulted on this?
They have not, I don't imagine they'd have an issue with it, but they would need to sign off on this.
So to me, that's the question, so there's three, so everyone. All, all the businesses know the issues with parking down there, we do have parking issues down there, we've tried to remedy that. You know, is three parking spots a lot? No, but it's three parking spots. So to, to me, really, the question is, you know, I want to support the four-way and all the businesses down there as much as possible. The real question down there is, are all the businesses down there willing, willing, you know, to see the reduction of three additional parking spots to allow, you know, the four-way to do this? To me, that's, to me, that's the question because they're all impacted by it. Those three customers could go to Station One, they could go to Pelkins, they could go to Kitchen Table, they could go anywhere.
Station One and four-way are the only ones that signed that agreement. Station One, I guess it was part of our sale of the fire station was.
Okay.
So either way, Station One would have to sign off on it.
Yes.
So all you need to know from us is are we okay with it? I'm okay with it.
The one thing, and we'll add to that though, is, is it clear that any legal fees? Because it says in here, it says, uh, before we move forward, legal fees and expenses. Are those legal fees and expenses going to be paid for by the four-way or by the village?
We would ask four-way to cover those costs.
Okay. Then it's essentially saying, yeah, we're okay with it if it's explored and stationed, okay? Then I am also okay with it.
Then I'm also okay with it.
I'm good.
Anyone else?
I'm good.
No motion necessary, we just wanted.
Trustee Andrews, he's got something he's trying to get out.
Well, I'm not okay with losing all that parking. They can maybe find a way to put a little bit of parking, where they're going to take some of those handicap spots out. Maybe can relocate some motorcycle parking over there in a different manner, motorcycles not as large as a car, it'd be an option to, to look at.
I think we definitely need to see where the handicap parking is going. You can't just take out handicap parking and not replace handicap parking. Well, we've already established that. Never mind, okay. Did I give you what you need?
Yeah, we'll work with them.
Terrific. Okay, planning and zoning, 10B, ordinance 2024-11, a rezoning request to rezone SU 338-2, 3618, Stream Road from agriculture to rural residential with a planned development overlay. Zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you, we are looking at a parcel of just over eight acres. It is in single-family use, and the property owner would like to split off the rear portion and sell it to his grandson. The PDD is only to address the limited road frontage. He does not have enough dedicated roadway to create that lot in the rear. So, he more or less is putting it on a flagpole, which still gives him plenty of yield. We got a two, two-acre minimum lot size out there, so we're, we're gonna still have two homes on, on eight acres. There is a private drive that goes all the way past that. There's actually a 35-foot dedicated right-of-way almost back to where it widens out to the full lot size, but it's only 35 feet wide, it has no road improvements. It's all currently a private drive. So, we're bringing the 15-foot-wide strip out to the main part of Stream Road. They're a little bit south of where the, the full width of the dedicated Stream Road is, so we're gonna, we ask that that be flared out to at least contain 15 feet on the actual cul-de-sac bulb. Otherwise, they're down in an area that still only has 15 feet of dedicated, or 35 feet of dedicated right-of-way and no improvements. But it's mainly just to create that one additional lot. Both lots would then be above four acres. Your planning and zoning commission recommendation was for approval of the PDD with three conditions, the pond maintenance agreement, include at least 15 feet of frontage on the improved portion of Stream Road, and then meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
Okay, questions for Mr. Dunks? Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-11, a request to rezone SU-338-2 from agriculture to rural residential with a planned development overlay with the following conditions. One, upon maintenance to be included with the CSM. Two, include at least 15 feet of frontage on the improved portion of Stream Road. And three, meet the requirements of other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
We have a motion on the floor from trustee Romes to suggest, to recommend approval of the 2024-11 request to rezone SU 338-2 from agriculture to rural residential with a planned development overlay with the conditions as stated, one through three. Is there a second?
Second.
I had a second from trustee Neto. Any other further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I'll take a roll call.
Thank you.
Trustee Romes?
Aye.
Trustee Stevens?
Aye.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Neto?
Aye.
President Venrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, six to zero.
Okay, thank you. I would know that if I read my own notes. All right, moving on. I appreciate that. Item 10C, direct staff, the design review committee, zoning administrator Dunks.
Thank you. Our design review committee has been around for 25-plus years. It was instrumental in design standards that we use today. Over the years, the zoning code has been amended and modified to incorporate much of their building design standards into code. Prior to that, they were just their wishes, now it's, most of it is codified. In the beginning, it was a five-person committee. It looked at all design features for commercial projects, whether it was landscaping, signage, or building elevations. They were all part of that. Landscaping was actually looked at, down to the plant types and whatnot. Over the years, that has been kind of phased out, it's just hard to maintain the same. Find a plant that doesn't work, you're not gonna jump through a committee to change that all the time, you just put something else in there. You know, we've never maintained exact plantings over time, and it did change. It's more just about providing green space in their site plan. What plan you choose, I don't care. And our existing design review really doesn't care. Back in 2015, it was, it did go down to a three-person review. One trustee, one resident, and, and then myself. Mike Schneider was that appointed trustee for the nine years. The 2015 change required a three O approval, or the item would have been brought forward to the board for final determination. All materials were distributed online, and decisions were made within the days rather than the four or five weeks it used to take to get on a design review agenda. In the nine years, we've never once had any extended discussion with any project, and the board has not seen a single two-to-one vote for their final determination on it. Anything that would have been one to two would have been deemed as failed, and would not have been brought forward. We have not failed anything either. With the resignation of Mr. Schneider, I'm just wondering if this is the time to consider elimination of this committee? Or do we move forward appointing somebody else? It'll take, I, I believe it'll take a, an ordinance to amend our, I think, chapter two, but.
So, did the committee review every residential?
No, commercial.
Oh, it's only.
Commercial and public buildings. Anything that went forward to the board as a PDD never went to the design review?
It was essentially.
Because it was already approved.
Sounds like this is acting as a failsafe, almost. Because we, most of them, all of them were approved without comment, or did you have comments with the developer?
No, most of them were just, yeah, they look good, and, like I said, our code has evolved to the point where we cover most of that.
Yeah.
And as staff, if, if I do have a commercial building, come forward, whether it's a sign or actual building, because all signage, too, goes forward. When I approve it, I can put that in our consent agenda, or at least give you a report on it, what I approved. Might only be four or five times a year, but.
So, the system as it is, had essentially a group of people, and then it had an appeal path, right? So, if a person didn't like the committee's decision, they could appeal it then to the board?
If it was a two-one, if it was a one-two, they'd need to adjust something, and.
Okay. What if it was a three-O, so?
It was three-O, it passed.
Okay, so it was never like, like, what if it was an all-three?
Then it failed, too.
Okay. And then the, there was a pro, was there a process after that to bring it to the board?
Um, the way it was interpreted was no.
Okay.
Do we retain any control or authority, so a commercial building decides, wants to come in, and let's just say it wants to do, I, I don't know, they want to paint their building blaze orange, right? So, if we get rid of the design review committee, do, what are the mechanisms that we have in place to gently recommend that, you know, maybe blaze orange in a residential area is a bad idea, or something? Do we have anything?
Well, technically, by, by code, we don't have anything right now.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have masonry requirements.
By code?
By code, but it doesn't say what color masonry.
Okay, it doesn't get that specific.
It says, you know, you can use some standing seam steel if you have X amount of masonry, it doesn't.
Okay.
Doesn't technically address color, and that was part of the.
Yeah, I, I wasn't, I just picked out color as an element, but, you know, you know, the idea, the idea to me of, of, you know.
That discussion actually took place when AutoZone came to Swamaco. And, and that's about the time where the board member, or the committee members changed a little bit, and they did not, you know, originally, they didn't care what your corporate colors were. And we had just that slight swing, and it's, well, it's their corporate colors, what are we gonna do about it? You know? Because there were some that didn't like the stripes of AutoZone. But it's their corporate colors, you know, how far do you want to push it? That's up to you guys, I.
I'm, I'm fine with getting rid of the committee, I think it's too.
I mean, ideally, you would think that a business wouldn't want to make their place look bad.
Right, right, right.
But, you know, maybe they have bad taste.
That's what they say, there's no accounting for bad taste. I, I just, I, you know, this goes, this goes along with some of the other things, you know. We gotta get out of the business of trying to over-regulate.
Yeah.
You know? And, and this is, this seems like an element of over-regulation. You know, there, there's a lot of things that are changing in the world right now. You know, we're gonna have conversations on the comp plan, you know, talking about a lot of different elements, lot sizes being one of them. This is part of that, right? Why do we have, seem to feel like we have the authority to tell people what kind of bush they can put in front of their building? If the bushes are horrible and hideous, like trustee Eckert said, chances are, people aren't gonna go to their business, right? If you have a nice, attractive building, people are gonna appreciate that. So, I'm, I'm fine with it. Others?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I want to have utmost control over everyone's plantings.
I know you do, but that's. That's one of your.
I guess I'm okay with it, too.
You're Johnny Appleseed, you're one of, that's one of your personal passions. You'd have everybody plant fruit trees in front of there.
This is what you signed up for.
And you can maintain it.
All right, are we good?
You can still quit.
So, do you have direction on that? Zoning administrator Dunks?
With an ordinance to.
Disband?
Or the first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you.
Change that.
All right, very good. Item number 11, Public Works Department, items, resolution 24011, authorizing a cooperative agreement with Tri-County Recycling. And just as a reminder, myself, Director Smiths, this is a roll call vote.
Yep, thank you. So, just like last year, we submit through the DNRA recycling grant application. We follow up the following year with actuals. Usually, it generates about 20,000 to 25,000 a year we get for that grant. As one of the requirements for the grant application is that we sign a cooperative agreement with where our recyclables actually go, which is the Tri-County location. So, we would be signing a, an agreement with Brown County and acknowledging resolution 24011 that we did so, and that we are meeting all the requirements that were eligible for the program. And it's just a sense that Tri-County, his information is out there, we do share it through our Facebook page, but they do have an elaborate and nice website. They share everything that's listed on the agreement through their website and information that they hand out. We share a few things here, but it is always good to practice good recycling and make sure what's supposed to go in there does go in there. And in the end, it, you know, reduce our cost for operation and labor if, you know, they're not running into any issues and we're not having any hangups on the streamline to getting it there. So, tonight, we'd be looking for a motion to approve resolution 24011 and signing the agreement with Brown County.
How is this, is anything different from last year?
Nothing.
Oh.
Other than 2025.
Okay.
Anybody want to discuss that point, or do you want to make a motion? The difference being 2025, 25.
You gonna do it, Michelle?
I might just do it. Make a motion to approve passing resolution 24011 and signing the agreement with Brown County.
So, we've got a motion on the floor to approve resolution 24011, authorizing a cooperative agreement with Tri-County Recycling. That motion was made by trustee Eckert. That motion was seconded by trustee Andrews. Is there any further discussion or questions on this item? Then I will gratefully take a roll call vote.
Trustee Stevens?
Aye.
Trustee Andrews?
Aye.
Trustee Eckert?
Aye.
Trustee Neto?
Aye.
Trustee Romes?
Aye.
President Venrazum?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, six to zero.
Excellent. That brings us to our item 12 this evening, which is discussion on future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
I, I do not, but I forgot to do this earlier. I just wanted to welcome Katie to our first village board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Katie. I'm assuming nothing happened this evening to prevent you from being here bright and early tomorrow morning? No issues? Not nervous? Perfect.
The landscaping decision, she might.
Yeah, she's like, geez.
The president scare you away?
Wouldn't be the first. All right, do I have a motion to close this evening's meeting? I have a motion from trustee Romes to adjourn this evening's meeting, is there a second? I offer that second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries six to zero, thank you, everybody, thank you, everybody.